I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, October 4th, 2022 council meeting, Norristown Council Meeting to order. Can I have a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
Madam Secretary, can I have your call, please?
Rebecca Smith?
Here.
Akeem Jones?
Here.
Rashad Bates?
Here.
Tiffany Henley?
Here.
Dustin Queenen?
Here.
Heather Lewis?
Here.
Thomas LaPera?
Here.
Can I have a motion to approve the previous minutes?
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Executive session announcement, we did have an executive session on legal matters.
And specifically litigation.
Litigation.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move into presentations, right into a proclamation honoring the historic 190th anniversary of Mount Zion African Methodist Episcopal Church. Is anybody here from the church? Nope. I'll just go ahead and read the proclamation. Proclamation to honor Mount Zion African Methodist Episcopal Church of Norristown. The Norristown Municipal Council honors people and institutions that have contributed to the municipality's history and the betterment of the community. And whereas Mount Zion AME Church of Norristown started as a congregation in 1832 by reported runaway slaves, Mr. and Mrs. Lewis, John Lewis, in a building at Erie and Walnut Streets. And whereas church and community members worked to ensure the freedom of all persons throughout the 1800s in ensuring voting and civil rights. And whereas the church would find its permanent and current home on Willow Street in 1915. And whereas growth continued in 1995 with the start of a building expansion and renovation of the church to better serve its congregants and the community. And whereas in September 2022, Mount Zion AME celebrated its 190th anniversary under the leadership of Reverend Carlos D. Bowns, pastor, and now therefore, the Norristown Municipal Council recognizes and honors the historic anniversary of Mount Zion AME Church of Norristown, proclaiming this fourth day of October 2022. Thank you. Into CIS recognition plaque presentation to the Norristown Police Department. Do you want to come right up in the middle here?
Put it in the middle.
Yeah.
All right. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you so much for allowing us to be here tonight. My name is Anna Trout. I'm with the Montgomery County Office of Mental Health, and I'm here with my colleague, Michelle.
Michelle Monzo, I run the Crisis Intervention Specialist School at Montgomery County Emergency Service. It's the oldest school in the nation to actually educate law enforcement on how to identify mental illness and how to interact with it safely, getting everybody home safe. And this is a special recognition tonight, not just that they are one of our departments that have 100% trained officers, which is, you know, for as large as this department is, that is, speaks such volumes. But we, we don't have complete records, but we truly believe that the first officers that have come through our class back in 1976 were Norristown officers. So that makes this one even more special. This is not a mandated training for the state of Pennsylvania, so the fact that they work so hard to make it a requirement for all their officers to go through speaks volumes. And we also look at this as it's not a, it's not one of those check-off-the-box trainings. It's kind of, we keep them small, they come through, we're hoping that they learn a lot, you're all gonna shake your head, yeah. They're all sitting there going, I don't remember that training at all. But we also like to continue those resources, like, we provide them with a lot of resources. And a lot of times, as we know, our resources don't always work. So they keep those connections with us, they'll give us a call, and they work very closely with the county also, so.
And, you know, from the perspective of the county, we are so grateful to Norristown, not only for the commitment to sending people through this training, but also just for the partnerships with the mental health system in general. I stand up here as a professional and as a family member, and when I think about who I want to meet my loved one on their hardest day, it's somebody who works for an organization who says, this matters to us, getting this information matters, having these skills matter, being participants, leaders in the hub, right? To help encounter vulnerable people and families and say, let's get the right supports in place so that people can thrive and people can be okay and the community can be healthy. And we just really appreciate that, and it takes a lot of work, and it's not easy. And sending officers through, I think one of the smartest things that you've done is make it a policy, make it just a part of the procedure. That way, nothing falls through the cracks. So thank you for everything you've done. Chief Wood and Lieutenant Bishop, I'd like to read this plaque to you. Montgomery County Emergency Service, in partnership with the Montgomery County Office of Mental Health, present the Norristown Police Department with the Crisis Intervention Specialist Program Commitment Award, in recognition of full department completion of the three-day basic class, demonstrating a commitment to mental health training, de-escalation, and support, presented with gratitude 2022.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll go into announcements, Madam Vice President.
Yes. Couple of announcements. There are a photo ID clinic being held Saturday, October 8th, from 10:00 to 12:00 at the Hospitality Center, 530 Church Street. It will help folks prepare applications for photo IDs, social security cards, birth certificates, and voter registration. So if you know of anyone that needs those services, they'll be free and available to the public on that day. There is Faith in Blue on Friday, October 7th. The Norristown Police Department will participate in Faith in Blue and you, focused this year on confronting trauma. The chaplaincy unit will be working on the agenda. Participants will include Denise Flynn from the Women's Center, Annie Grasso from NAMI, and Brian McCauley from Trust, and Captain Bishop. So that will be going on on Friday. And that concludes my announcements. Counsel, any announcements? There might be one that I missed, too.
Yeah, I'll just share the Carver Community Center, George Washington Carver Community Center, is having a Pitching for Unity softball game on Saturday, October 15th, from 11:30 a.m. to 4 p.m. at Eisenhower Middle School. It is a partnership with Norristown Police, so excited to have some people playing softball. You can actually reach out to Chief Wood if you need information on how you can either be a part of it or...
Or be a cheerleader or something.
If you want to play. So yeah, that's Saturday, October 15th, so.
Any other announcements? Seeing none, we'll move into public comments. Madam Secretary.
Percy Thompson?
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
I've been many times up here, the same situation. First of all, when I, you got my name and phone number, but I never get contacted back on what situation it was whenever I tell you something, I never hear nothing back from nobody. If I want to get in touch with anyone, Kevin's the only one who responds back to me, because I direct my questions to him right now. So my question is, it's 300 blocks off West Poplar Street, with the new parking sign on both sides, same day, same timeframe, I'm still getting tickets. I mean, where should we park it? They said, well, can't you park in the parking lot? No, they can't park in the parking lot because it's filled up. Can't park on Ash Street because it's filled up. Can't park on Market Street because it's filled up. At that time in the morning, 1:00 in the morning, there is no parking spaces. So that's one of the questions. Other question was, thing I had was, lines in the street. It feels like somebody's going heads-on with me because they're right in the middle of the street, but they don't see a line. I mean, I'm kind of upset, you know, I'm getting hit or whatever, especially on the decal pipe between wood and basin. You cannot see, you got to go halfway out in the street to see, because there's no lines out there, because people still park out there. There used to be lines, but they all faded and gone. But there's no lines out there, no more, so you have to sneak out there and hope you don't get hit. I haven't seen like three or four accidents already out there, already, you know, because of the situation. Because of that car parked there or bed mattresses, it's just mattresses laying straight up, you can't see over the mattresses or something like this. So I just, that's what I bring up and say, you know, I appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Any other public comments from anybody that's here that didn't sign up?
Seeing none, we'll move right into fire. Chief O'Donnell, Resolution Number 22-66.
Evening, Municipal Council, for you, this is Resolution 22-66.
Request from Municipal Council to approve a resolution supporting a grant to hire additional firefighters.
Counsel, any questions? I just want to say to my colleagues up here that we should be doing everything we can, contacting our congresspeople to get this grant, because it's important for us.
And this is a follow-up to, you guys had already done a support before. We did not get included in that first round, and so we wanted to get a fresh resolution from you guys, and we're going to be sending this resolution to our federal delegation to try to urge them to support us in this next round as well.
So I'll say that I've reached out to Congresswoman Dean's office, and I encourage you all to do the same. She was responsive, so hopefully, Chief, it'll be successful this go-around.
With that, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 22-66?
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Akeem Jones?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenen?
Aye.
Heather Lewis?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye.
The ayes have it, resolution passes. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Police, Resolution Number 22-65, request for counsel to approve the promotion of Police Officer Andrew Bixler and Detective Louis Geiser to police corporal.
Good evening, Counsel. I'm super excited to bring this forward to you for your approval. These are two of the best officers we have in the department, and excited to be in front of you so we can promote them to corporal, as you can see, a lot of their corporals are here, so not only will they fill those voids we have through the lack of supervisors, but also boost morale, because we're awarding two guys who have been out there on the front lines doing a great job.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions, comments? Take it away. Or you need us to approve it? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 22-65?
Summoned.
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Akeem Jones?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenen?
Aye.
Heather Lewis?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye.
Ayes have it, Resolution 22-65 passes. Thanks, Chief.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Judge Nicole St. Phillips, and it is my honor and pleasure to swear in our new corporals this evening. All right, we're going to start with Corporal Geiser?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. All right, congratulations to you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, so here is your oath of office. I, Louis Geiser?
I, Louis Geiser.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, oh, uh-oh, wait, stop. We're moving too fast, let's do a, let's do a retake on that. Okay, very good. All right, let's try it again. I, Louis Geiser?
I, Louis Geiser.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States of America?
That I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania?
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Charter of the Municipality of Norristown?
The Charter of the Municipality of Norristown.
And that I will enforce the laws of this Commonwealth?
That I will enforce the laws of this Commonwealth.
And the ordinances of Norristown?
And the ordinance of Norristown.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office as police corporal?
And I will discharge the duties of my office as police corporal.
For the Municipality of Norristown Police Department?
For the Municipality of Norristown Police Department.
With honor and fidelity.
With honor and fidelity.
I do further swear or affirm?
I do further swear.
That I will uphold, obey, and enforce the law?
That I will uphold, obey, and enforce the law.
Without consideration?
Without consideration.
To a person's race, color, sex?
To a person's race, color, sex.
Religious creed, sexual orientation, age?
Religious creed, sexual orientation, age.
National origin, ancestry, handicap, or disability?
National origin?
Ancestry.
Ancestry, handicap, or?
Or disability.
Or disability.
Congratulations, Corporal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Corporal Bixler? Who do you have with you tonight?
My mom and my girlfriend.
All right.
I remember the Bible.
Good evening. Who's going to hold it?
We can hold it today.
Okay, very nice, okay. All right, cool, here we go. I, Andrew Bixler?
I, Andrew Bixler.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States of America?
That I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania?
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Charter of the Municipality of Norristown?
The Charter of the Municipality of Norristown.
And that I will enforce the laws of this Commonwealth?
I will enforce the laws of this Commonwealth.
And the ordinances of Norristown?
And the ordinances of Norristown.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office as police corporal?
And I will discharge the duties of my office as police corporal.
For the Municipality of Norristown Police Department?
For the Municipality of Norristown Police Department.
With honor and fidelity.
With honor and fidelity.
I do further swear?
I do further swear.
That I will uphold, obey, and enforce the law?
That I will uphold, obey, and enforce the law.
Without consideration?
Without consideration.
To a person's race, color, sex?
To a person's race, color, sex.
Religious creed, sexual orientation, age?
Religious creed, sexual orientation or creed.
Age?
Age.
With national origin?
National origin.
Ancestry, handicap, or disability?
Ancestry, handicap, or disability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm going to say, congratulations to both of you, and we thank you for continuing the work that everybody here does. I'll give you a minute to clear out, take pictures, whatever you got to do. Thank you. Okay. Move on to finance, Resolution Number 22-67. Ms. Fister?
Good evening, Counsel. Tonight, I am requesting approval for the minimum municipal obligation for the fire, police, and non-uniform pension plans for next year. Compared to last year, that's slightly from last year, basically due to salary increases and that. The total budget item is $3,247,838. The pension, the police, firefighters, and the PMRS plans are determined actuarially, and we're required by law to supplement those pensions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 22-67?
I don't know.
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Akeem Jones?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenen?
Aye.
Heather Lewis?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye.
The ayes have it, resolutions passes. Thank you. Mr. Jones, Resolution Number 22-59.
All right, Kevin, pass it over.
It's up there on the monitor.
Oh, is it? Thank you, Counsel. Yeah, you have before your resolution. I apologize. I don't know why it's not coming out. All right, no problem. All right, it doesn't, I want to do this just in the interest of transparency, Counsel, in the interest of transparency, you guys received this in your, in your package. We're asking Counsel to consider approval of Resolution 22-59, which requests Counsel to approve an agreement for the purchase of document management services and laser feast software from Scan Ten in the amount of $310,688.50. So Counsel, we proposed a laser feast and scanning project in last year's budget, which was approved, and we put about $75,000 in the budget for 2022. We wanted to do a multi-tier project in order to deal with all the records that were really cluttering the old City Hall. We particularly went through a process and have been going through a record management process for years where we've been weeding out files according to the state schedule that allows us to destroy records, and we brought those to you periodically as we go through that process. One of the things that we did in terms of the renovation of City Hall is went into the dreaded attic to have to deal with all the materials that were stored and have been stored for, I guess, since 1972, forward in the attic. And some of those records, you know, had already been destroyed as a part of retention process, some of them still remain and will be. But one of the things we wanted to do is not clutter the building, continue to clutter and have a process where we're cluttering the building with paper and files, and really make it much easier for us to address, you know, right-to-know requests, et cetera, by actually scanning these records and putting in a process where they're easier, they're coded and documented and easier to access in terms of multi-use and public records required. So I wasn't going to walk you through so much of a presentation, I could say you've gotten, you've gotten this, but I did want for the public to see, kind of, just a sampling of all of the tubs and boxes and baits that we have right now in, in storage containers, bioreally controlled storage containers as, as we, as we deal with them. And just want to kind of walk you through it, these are the kind of things that we're doing, and all of those costs add up to that $310,000 that I talked about earlier. I did want to kind of point out, too, in terms of when we get to what they're going to be doing in the workflow, that they're going through is certainly pick up the documents, and then they're going to log the documents in and establish a tracking center for doing it, do all of the prep they need to do for the scanning, and then go through a high-volume scanning process with each of the document, do quality control, because again, we want to make sure that if we're going to be scanning and ultimately getting rid of paper documents, we've got the best scanned versions of those documents. They're going to rescan, check about, check those quality control images, index them again for those, for us being able to know what records are where and by department, by file number, by case number, et cetera. They're going to then format the records and deliver them to our, back to the municipality. And then all of the documents that they have retained and that we will authorize to destroy per the schedule, they will securely shred those. In terms of them having control of our records, one of the things we wanted to make sure that because they are financial records and other, you know, customer resident-based records, business-based records, we were really concerned in, as we looked at and evaluated vendors to do this, about security. And so here are the measures that they take in terms of 24-hour monitoring of where records are stored, fire bird list system, nobody without an employee ID or visitor's ID can be near our records, they're put in a secure data storage center, and they are also put in a restricted area for, for access. All the employees who deal with our records will have background checks, and in every area where there's production of our records going on for the scan process, they will be supervised, and they also use coded copy machines so they will know exactly what records were put in with machines. So we've done, I think, everything we can to make sure that those documents are in the best shape and in the best safe condition as we do it. So we'd like to proceed with this project and start this Phase 1, and asking Counsel to approve us entering into this agreement.
Counsel, any questions? Madam Vice President?
So I did see, like, the destruction, so there's no, I guess, governmental issues for, since they're being scanned, you can destroy them immediately, even if there hasn't been a timeline for how long you need to keep paper documents or whatever?
That's a great question. We're not going to destroy anything that we can't destroy according to that state-approved schedule. So some of these records, and like I said, we went through a lot of them, so the ones that we knew we could destroy, we destroyed them, and they won't be a part of the scanning process because you don't have to keep them. And the truth of the matter is, anybody who does this will tell you, when the government says you can destroy records, the best thing to do is to destroy the record.
Right.
So you don't have just this ongoing eternal liability for controlling. But nothing will get destroyed until it meets our schedule.
Okay, so that's paper copy.
For destruction, yeah, paper copy.
And then what's the retention for scan copies? Like, is there unlimited data base?
Yeah. For, for, for these purposes, we, you know, if we scan, if we scan the records and we can destroy them, we can just eliminate the scanned copies as well.
Okay.
And, and remove them from the files. There might be a cause, and a lot of communities consider the cause, that might, there's not a storage issue anymore in terms of it, for posterity, you might want to keep them. You know, I've seen it in some instances where that comes back to bite you, and I'll give you a fore-instance. We had records of a council meeting for a county I used to work at years ago, where council members were saying some pretty inappropriate things in, in the meeting and about people. And the records should have been destroyed, they weren't, and somebody did an open records request, and we had to produce them. And that was litigation, and, and the plaintiff prevailed because the records existed. If they had been destroyed, we could have legitimately said, we no longer have those records, they've been destroyed, so. So there's a, you know, historical thing, if you want to do it, but we certainly...
Yeah, because we run into schematic issues, not necessarily minutes, where people are talking about each other, but, you know, property boundary lines and things like that, I think. But you also touched on, so with the right-to-know, what's, how, so say somebody wanted to know something that's in this pile of stuff?
Yeah.
Like, what's the delay, or how will we have access?
Actually, they, it's built into the contract that if there's a request for records that we need, that they will respond. that we need, that they will respond, like, within an hour in terms of identifying where that record is in the boxes that they have and will get it. So we anticipated that something is going to come up throughout the course of this project, that they might have something and they'll they'll get those records back to us.
And last question, how long is this going to take them to scan these millions of documents?
So the scanning process is really not that long. I mean, I think it's more the cataloging and getting it in in an organized, in an organized fashion. So I think, once we get them, it'll probably, this first phase of scanning will probably be done, like, within three months at the very latest. They'll have them ready to move on. It's really the kind of the cost that's going to drive the time.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Will this system be used for future documents going forward in like a more, as documents are created, they're scanned way instead of like 20 years from now?
Right. That's a perfect question. And absolutely, what we're building in going forward is, particularly when we get back into the new space going forward, we're going to be scanning in as we create records and actually not trying to create boxed, boxes of paper documents. So everything that we can have as an electronic record, that's what we want to do. And this sets us up in that process in terms of how they catalog and where they need to go in each department.
And two more related questions. Is there ongoing annual fees for like the storage of all those documents?
If if they're storing their documents, there's a there's a time period, I believe, up to 60 days beyond, you know, them having delivered the rec, ready to deliver boxed documents to the hold them for for free. Then if we try to get them to keep them for that, for beyond that 60 days.
Sorry, I meant the digital, like the digital file storage.
No, no, there's there's no cost, no cost for us, for them to handle the digital files. And actually, what they'll have is backup because the primary digitals will be with us. We'll we'll have them.
And last question, I think, is, since we're scanning them in and intention is for this to be usable, like, we can find documents in an easy way, was there consideration to like readable text scans versus image scans where you could like search for words among the whole document?
Perfect question. Absolutely. This is what it's supposed to be. So you did put in a phrase, put in a whatever and search for.
Okay. I saw image a bunch of times and wanted to.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
One quick question. Was all this stored in a cloud? Is it going to be municipality-managed going forward?
Well, I know that they will have the cloud doc, the cloud documents and they're supposed to have redundancy for us in terms of the cloud documents as well. We're going to, you know, have backups ourselves because I believe in being able to touch what we own.
Counsel, any other questions? Comments? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 22-59?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Hakeem Jones?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenan?
Aye.
Heather Lewis?
Aye.
Thomas Lapiera?
Aye. The eyes have it, resolution passes. We'll move on to Counsel approval of a waiver of the noise ordinance to allow for limited early hours of work at the Justice Center construction site.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Counsel, this is a follow-up to my outreach to you all last week regarding the concrete pours that the county had to do in order to facilitate the Justice Center project. You all had given me consensus to notify them that they can proceed. And as a part of the procedure, we wanted to come back to you so that we can have it recorded in the minutes that you actually waived the the noise ordinance in order for that to occur. And we wanted to memorialize that as we've done in the past when there have been waivers of the noise ordinance.
Counsel, any questions?
Were, I don't know if there's any, I mean, I guess there is some residents in the vicinity. Have they been notified or?
Well, they they were notified that it was, it happened. It's already happened. So it was Wednesday and Friday last week. That's why, that's why it was so early. But they were, they were notified. There weren't, you know, that many. And again, the noise was actually the trucks coming through. But the actual pours were 40 feet in the, in the, under, below street level. So the pouring wasn't the issue. It's just the time, the time that they wanted to start.
Okay. Any other questions? That, do I have a motion to approve a waiver of the noise ordinance?
No move.
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Hakeem Jones?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenan?
Aye.
Heather Lewis?
Aye.
Thomas Lapiera?
Aye. The eyes have it. Waiver is approved.
Thank you.
Departmental reports will go into finance, Ms. President.
Earlier this afternoon, I sent you all a budget variance report for the month, year-to-date August. And it's very similar to what we had in June. On a good note, the earned income tax continues to move a little bit higher. Right now, we expect to be about $500,000 high for the year. So that's a good thing to offset the high fuel costs and vehicle maintenance costs, which continue to rise. The gas prices have leveled off, so that hasn't, that's a little bit better than what I had reported in July. Other than that, that's, that's the major things going on. So right now, we're still on track to be on budget and we're still in good shape. And we're still including that 1.2 million of our support.
Counsel, any questions? Thank you. Recreation, Ms. Jenardi had an emergency to deal with, so we're going to move her back. Ms. Mancagni?
Thank you, Counsel President.
The most important president.
Counsel members, thank you so much for allowing me to share with you. Report I shared with you during the budget meeting. We did not have much of an audience and hopefully we can share this information with the public so they are aware of the status of various projects that are going on. To that effect. So. Okay, we'll start with the most important project that is actually underway that should be actually culminating this October. How many years? I think it's been five years of going back and forth with the state. Please to let the public know the status is actually good to the extent that we're expecting to have the conveyance completed in October. And that is 68 acres that will be abated and rated for development this October. It is going to be held by the redevelopment authority on behalf of the municipality. And the municipality is looking to work with the redevelopment authority to put out a request for proposals where we will actually have a master plan. This is not going to be as a type of a project. It's going to be a deliberate project. It's going to basically look at the vision that the municipality residents want of this site that is actually very attractive to very many developers. They're circling, they've been circling around for a little while. So they're waiting for that to move ahead. So of course, we're looking to see, get a vision that will incorporate a little bit of commerce, a little bit of recreation, a little bit of light industry. And we'll see what, you know, the comes forth when the master plan is put in place and the developers from nationwide. It's not going to be just regional. It's going to be nationwide. So we're looking forward to that and that's a big deal. And that's moving forward. That's what I reported you this evening.
Yeah, a quick question.
Sure.
You go back. So I'm assuming the green is what Norristown owns?
Yes.
So the other parts, it's still part of the campers. Have the other townships decided? I mean, that's not going to be conveyed to them, right? Will the state still, will the state still own that underside?
The state will still own the other side, yes.
And what happened, discussions with that buffer?
The green part, yes.
I believe that's where they proposed the new forensic unit on the west northern side, correct?
Yes. So it's no longer. And when we're looking at the vision for the state hospital, and that's why it's critical to do a master plan, we have to make sure that whatever's coming there, that these uses, the green area and the remaining uses, are going to be gently separated so that you could actually have these users in the green area almost independently take off on their own. And it's very possible to do that. The good thing is, Colonel and I had an opportunity to meet with developers who have done something very similar in in other states. And to be honest with you, they were more pleased with this side than some of the other sides they've worked on. So it's very promising. Not only do we have access roadways, but we also have public transportation that's already going there. And there's a rail score going there as well. That's very attractive to developers. Even better, they don't have to deal with assembling property. They don't have to deal with abating the property. So this is going to be virgin, prime land development. So this is good news for us. And it's moving forward. That's even better.
One of the other things, want to make sure that when we were negotiating this agreement about this 68 acres, one of the things we also have is a side letter that 10 years after we've gotten this conveyance and we expect that we're going to do very well, we actually have a re-opener agreement that will look at the other property out there in Norristown as well. So the state committed to being able, to being willing to talk to us about conveying even some more later on.
And that was a very wise thing to do, actually, because, you know, circumstances change, issues happen, help starts, everyone starts circling. So you better have an opportunity to actually even do more. So that was, that's, thank you, Colonel. I'll move to the next project. I know we're all anxiously waiting for it. It's taken a while, a lot of legal maneuvering. But I want to thank Counsel, especially Counsel members who were here before when we're going through the whole process of, the parcel of land. It is my dream. Anyway, took 22 years to get that done. Finally, getting site control of the most critical piece of property downtown was really pivotal to getting downtown going. And went through the request for proposals, were able to get very interesting proposals, ended up with MM Partners being the winners of the proposal. I know we bought the land for about one, 2 million, I think, 2 million. And they're going to be selling it back, rather buying it from us. We're going to be getting 2.5 million. That's a win-win. And of course, I'm always going to advocate that you look for more land to buy. But anyway, that's just a side note. Downtown. So anyway, right now, MM has, is doing the due diligence in terms of environmental. They've gone through. They're also recipients, believe it or not, of our EPA grant that actually prepares Phase Ones. So we'll help them in that way as well. And as you know, they also got some R cap funding to go towards this development. This is a critical development that we want to bring people to live, work, and play downtown. As you can see, it's going to be bringing us a healthy estimate, estimated tax. So mainly count that way. We're hoping the spring of 2023, they should be breaking ground. They still have to do a little bit of additional steps. There is a little zoning, which is not an issue, comes to you, Counsel. And then they'll have to do land development. That should move pretty quickly.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
Because this is adjacent to the Justice Center renovation. Is there anything that's going on there that is beneficial, like, that they need to act on? Because I know there's infrastructure and stuff. Like, is there something? Are they kind of piggybacking on any of that?
Actually, the reason why this project was possible is because of the Justice Center. That it's the security of having a $500 million deal going right next door to you makes this land very attractive. And it makes all of the land around there attractive. So, yes, it piggybacks. It helps in that sense. Okay. So we do, we've not forgotten our seniors. We have the Phase 3. Phase 1 was completed. People have moved in. Phase 2 was completed. People have moved in. Phase 3, we're looking to see if it will be delivered spring or summer. They should be coming for land development. So it's a move, product is continuing. Alba Noel, also.
Does that complete that lot?
Yes, it does.
So that would be done?
Yes, it does.
Thought there was one more parcel.
I was going to say, I don't know if there's a fourth.
I thought there was a fourth parcel.
No, there's three parcels.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there's three parcels. Actually, initially, this third parcel was actually supposed to be an adult kind of daycare center of that nature. Then we tried to see if we could have some intergenerational type of development there. And it didn't seem to attract the developers that we thought would be interested in that. So Elon has decided to continue with the seniors. But the other two partners, as you know, were filled out so quickly, there was a waiting list. So there's some demand that we really have to address. So that's moving on. The good thing is to, if you recall, the hospital was here. When the hospital was there, we got zero taxes. Now, it's become a tax-bearing property.
Is that 8,000, is that per unit? Like, I mean, building?
Yeah, per, per, yes.
And they received alerts, so that's, was that tied into the all three phases of it?
Yes. They would probably be coming for this third one, yes.
And the prior project having received alerts, or are they tapping into the other tax abatements that we created?
You mean these other two?
They both got alerts.
They both got alerts.
Eminem, oh, but the one pri, Eminem.
Eminem, oh, no, they haven't, they haven't touched.
Yeah, so will they be tapping into our other tax rebate programs?
If I don't have, if you don't have it. So we're good. We want the money to come in. The whole idea was, you have incentives to attract development. But if at some point they're not asked for it, we don't know. Yes. We want the tax dollars to come in. Alba Noel, as you all know, has been completed, successful project, 34 units. As a developer mentioned to you last time, she was here. She was pleased with how quickly the development occurred. She was pleased with the people who actually were able to buy the properties. And with, she has created yet another community. We're still continuing with a housing rehab program. We have not forgotten that. That of course contributes to stabilizing our neighborhoods. We're also continuing with first-time home buyers program. We'll start doing a serious marketing issue on that because I know it kind of tapered off in the last three years. So we really need to push it to have people take advantage of the first-time home buyers. Then we're going to move on. Bear Building, as most of you know, it's still going through renovations. Incidentally, they might be coming, some of the users have changed slightly. I think they're looking for an axe-throwing use. First time I heard of that. So they'll be coming to zoning to actually ask for an axe-throwing as part of the uses that's going to be in this spot. That should be interesting. So. As you can see, it's going to provide us some good tax dollars as well. Vonsi, as you all know, you've been there, it's delivered, doing an excellent job. In fact, they have been having wonderful entertainment and really being an attractive addition. Very smart developer who got there right next to a property that's about to take off. So I think he clearly was looking at plans and knew what to do. 257 East Main, you're familiar with that. Those are the 24 residential units. Initially, they were 19, but now they're 24. And that should be coming fall of this year. So they have met all the requirements that went through land development. They've done everything. They're ready to go. So there'll be great breaking ground anytime soon. And the park, the zoo, this is supposed to expansion of the zoo. It's another critical property. And as you all know, we should be expecting the 1.2 million when they expand their parking. So that comes back and can be used in recreation activities. But again, it's another engine that is an economic engine that brings people into into town. And if you recall, Counsel, the zoo was here to ask you to just at least give some sort of a nod or feedback to what they were planning to do. So they will be coming back with the process of just extending the zoo in the manner that it's being indicated on this map. It's a lot, but it's going to be very impactful to the community. And of course, the entertainment tax is what we like to take up. Anyhow, Royal Farms has been delivered. The car wash is in. That was the last piece of it, remember? Started off with a. Started off with a convenience store. Now the car wash has been delivered. And we're hoping that continues, gives us good taxes, as you can see. Now in residential developments, we have Benjamin Court, if you recall. This is actually underway. As we speak, this is going on. If you've been driving by Art Street, I know I've had some calls from some of the neighbors saying, "Why are all these mounds here?" It's been, that's what happens. And that's what we expect, 32,000 units. So what will keep you apprised is the closer they get to opening our, at that council now. Hopefully, we can go all good, celebrate when it's done. As you can see, the estimated taxes are a good amount. 1421 Green Valley. This project has gone through all the approvals, all the land development. They are going through the escrows. We're hoping that it will be delivered fall or winter. And as you can see, the taxes are pretty good as well. 1417, 1419 New Hope Street, that's also going to come in the fall for the developer. 1517 East Fordland Street, it's an infill housing, one of the parking lots that was actually, one of the hospital parking lots, but it's being turned into a residential unit. It means, remember, zero taxes before. Now it's going to bring us some taxes. This is actually just starting, so it's underway. 2336 West Woods, the developer has just sold it to another developer. And they should be trying to deliver this actually by the end of next year, I think the new ordinance is looking at. 820 Thomas Street, some of you might recall when you were in council. These are, it's a $2 million, a single row of property, kind of new kind of design, but it fits in the neighborhood somehow. And again, it's for a lot of the millennials who are getting into this market and they want their own design, not necessarily the usual traditional red brick houses. So the developers are just responding to what the market is looking for. So that should, is supposed to break ground in the fall of 2023. All the land development approvals out through. So it's long through. So all these are really good news. It's not just speculation. 1437 McCale Street, that's the office, medical office. In fact, some of my staff have been over there. They've completed. As I mentioned the other day, I was really happy to learn that they do pay local taxes, which usually they don't when it comes through a hospital-type arrangement. So this is good news to know that they are paying taxes. Parent Terrace, 10th Avenue, New Hope Street, it's an addition building. It's going to go into space. It's 36 units. That is growth. That is good. When you add to your portfolio, it means you're doing well in your business portfolio. And if you're adding to it, it's good for us. And of course, it brings us taxes. That's what they're going to have. Stint and Ball is one of my favorite builders, actually, because Mr. D'Arcangelo builds well. I think some of you are familiar with some of his products, right at the end of Johnson Highway. He, I think he built that in 85. And when you look at that development, it looks like it was built 10 years ago. He's a good builder, so he also has a following. And when you see him coming to build something, he already has people waiting to buy. So he's ready to go. He just contacted us last week. He's about to submit his escrows and he's got all his land development approvals, so it's a go. Sandy Hill, this is still a little speculative. They will be coming to council soon. They're still working on the last details. But basically, that's what they're looking to do. The Justice Centers, we just spoke. As you all know, it's a $500 million project. It has basically stimulated a whole lot of buying all around. We have had so many property transfers around because people understand once you, a government infuses that type of capital, they understand that the risk is reduced. That's why they buy the property and they're interested in developing it. And that's just a vision of what you expect to see when it's done. It's a vision from, if I recall, it's from Main Street. This is a vision from Sweden. And then we go for another big one, and that's the Kennedy Kennedy High School that's being redeveloped. And it's going to be 317. It's actually a $170 million project. As you recall, the developer was here and shared with you what she was planning to do. And not only did she share with you, but you did pass the preliminary land development. She will be coming in for her final land development, we believe, in about two weeks. So she'll be back at the planning commission. She'll be back for council for final. And she's looking to deliver the first homes, as she told you, especially the own-occupied homes in spring of 2024. And as you can see, there's some healthy taxes that are coming in. Lafayette Street project, as you're all aware, critical project for economic engine. We're still looking at the connectivity to the turnpike. It's fully funded. It's not as too clear when it's going to be, but it is funded. The Turnpike Commission did fund it, so...
She's got to keep saying two years.
And of course, you're familiar with the Market Street project that's still going. Quite an intense project, but it's the second phase. This has also stimulated quite a bit of property being sold around that area.
The farmer's got new gas pumps.
We need to have...
Now they can do the building.
Now the building is... Yes. King of Crusher High Street Line, I bet you all heard the good news, it's moving ahead. For a while, it was a little speculative, but it's moving ahead. And that basically concludes my presentation. Of course, the Arch Street Greenway, where we're linking ourselves to the regional trails, will be coming back to council, hopefully within a month and a half, so that we can start the Phase Three. And we're going to do all of this and finally link right up to other regional areas in the farm park. So we're still pushing on. Thank you very much.
Excellent work, gentlemen.
All right, thank you.
Who wants to go after that?
What you got, Cray?
Am I got something better?
I would say next to a lot of time.
Any questions for Ms. M'Sonje? Do I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.